Our good evening. Good evening, everyone. If you'll take your seats. Thank you very much. I'm going to call this meeting to order for the City of Paducah Board of Commissioners. On what day is this? February 19th, 2019. And we're going to start with the City Commissioners' roll call, and then we'll switch over to the county.
Mr. Abraham?
Present.
Mr. McElroy?
Present.
Mr. Watkins?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present.
And we'll call it a order then the meeting of the McCracken Fiscal Court, February 19th, 5:30. No, 5:00 PM. And the roll call, please.
Commissioner Bartman?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
And Judge.
Here.
Excellent. Well, welcome, guys. I'm excited for you guys to be here, sharing this podium with us. Isn't this awesome? So, we were just talking up here that this is, you know, our first time to do this together. So, bear with us as we figure this out, because we're hoping to do this more often in the future. So, we're all learning. That's the case, for sure. So, tonight, we have a very specific task, two very specific tasks, actually. The first one tonight is to conduct a public hearing around the TIF district process. That will be our first order of business. And then, we will go into executive session, actually, to talk about a very specific part of economic development that we need to discuss together as two bodies. And then, we'll come back out and hear from the Columbia Theater on their presentation. I do want to make it a point that, moving forward, these agenda items are not necessarily always related to each other. So, I just want to point that out as we get started, that tonight, it just so happened we were prepared to hear about TIF and prepared to hear about the Columbia Theater at the same time. So, just want to make sure that's clear to everyone, that these separate, these items are separate right now. So, to get started, we're actually going to ask Casey Bolton to come up from the Commonwealth Economics Group, who's been working on this with the City of Paducah for a long time. We are ready to see something happen with this process. And Casey's going to start with the presentation, and then, take questions from us, the body, and we'll discuss, and then, we'll start the public hearing process. One more item of business. If you are here to make a statement about the TIF district, there are comment cards on the little cart beside the door. And so, if you want to make a comment, please fill one of those out, and then, we'll have you bring them up to the podium when it's time, just so we can have your name and information, okay? And feel free to grab one anytime that you think you want to say something. All right. Thanks, Casey, for being here.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm Casey Bolton, a partner with Commonwealth Economics. We've worked on a number of TIF projects throughout the state, a lot of them at the local level, and a lot of them eventually end up at the state level. So, what I'm going to do tonight is walk you through generally what I would call a TIF 101 presentation, how the TIF process works, how it's beneficial, how it fits to this project, and then, go into some specifics about the downtown riverfront Paducah project in particular. So, 2007, the state really formalized its TIF law. It replaced some, what I would call, trial legislation from 2000, and took some of the lessons that were learned during that period, and applied them to the new statutes to really regulate the program and make it work as it was intended to. It does require local government participation to get state participation. So, really, one of the main things they did in the new legislation was require that all of the approval happen at the local level first, before you approach the state to ask them for participation. So, big picture, the concept is that a city or county can create what's called a development area, and that area would be an area that's designated as in need of future development, and has a public expenditure need that is a little bit over and above what the private sector would typically take on, or is able to take on, on their own. You think about different infrastructure expenditures, parking garages, roadways, parks, public spaces, utility improvements. All of those are a part of any major development project, particularly in urban areas. So, this program was designed for that, and the way that it works is it takes the improved project and the taxing, the tax revenues that it generates, over and above what was generated prior to the development, and reinvests those dollars into the project. So, you have current, what we would call baseline tax revenues, that the project or area is currently generating. When you improve that area, the idea is that even more tax revenues are generated at both the local city and county and state level. And the difference between what was being generated previously and what is generated now is called the increment. And that increment is what's used to finance those certain public improvements. So, here's a diagram that kind of shows that. If you think about, you know, where we are in time today, what the area might generate would be in the orange. And a couple of years pass, the project comes out of the ground, it starts generating new property taxes, occupational taxes, sales taxes, and that would be the green. So, you have kind of existing in orange, green would be what we would refer to as the incremental tax revenues. So, you can see the timeline as they are generated. Those are then plowed back into the project as reimbursement for certain public improvements. Then, eventually, the TIF program ends, and all of those become what is represented by the orange, which would then, you know, flow back to the city and county, as usual, and state. Some important things to know about TIF. It does not change the way properties or businesses are taxed. It doesn't create exemptions. Everybody in a TIF district will still pay taxes as they normally would. They may not even know that they're in a TIF district. It really is just a way to capture that incremental tax lift and redirect it as reimbursement for certain public improvements in that district. So, you know, there's no increase in tax, there's no new assessment. It's just a matter of tracking where taxes were in that area previously, where they are after the project, and using that lift to finance the project. They can be used for one or more projects in a development area. It doesn't have to be just one specific project. Oftentimes, there are a number of different infrastructure needs in an area, a number of different private developers that are involved. They can be used for certain eligible costs. The developer can pay for those costs and be reimbursed. The city or county can pay for those costs and be reimbursed using those TIF revenues. But, all state tax dollars that are participated are designated for what's referred to as public infrastructure. And that's really the purpose of the TIF program, is to pay for those public infrastructure components like utilities, roadways, parking, et cetera. The local taxes can be used, are all local real estate property taxes and local occupational taxes, with the exception of fire districts and school districts. Those tax revenues are prohibited by statute from being participated as a part of the TIF. So, all of those taxing districts will actually get a lift as the project happens. Those taxes would not go back to finance the project. Those would actually flow as normal to the school district or the fire district. Those are generally pledged for 20 years to match the state term. They can be pledged for up to 30 years at the local level. And that is all governed by an ordinance and local participation agreement that is drafted and passed at the local level. That establishes the boundaries of the TIF district that define where those revenues are calculated and where those incremental revenues are spent and reimbursed. It approves the plan. It lays out exactly which taxes are participated and how much, and what for. There is no ability for one taxing district to affect another, or to force another to participate. So, in other words, the county cannot create a TIF district and force the city to participate their tax dollars, and the city cannot create a TIF district and force the county to do the same. And any taxing districts within there likewise, like a library district or something to that effect. The amount is all spelled out in the ordinance and what's called the local participation agreement from each district, and each taxing district would basically approve it and sign the same document. In order to designate an area as a development area, there are certain findings that state statutes require be met, and it really is to identify areas that are underdeveloped or have experienced deterioration. Here's a list of several of those conditions that could be met. You see loss of residential, commercial, or industrial use, low-income households, deterioration of structures, abandonment, inadequate public improvements, or substantial deterioration, or any combination of factors that impairs or arrests economic development of a city or county. So, you know, you look at those, and there are certainly, I think, some that fit the area that we're talking about, and particularly, when you think about inadequate public improvements and a combination of factors that impairs growth and development. When you look at the riverfront, I think it's a pretty developable piece of property. It just needs to get over a couple of hurdles. We haven't mentioned that there are state programs. You know, it all starts at the local level, but the idea here is to get to the state and ask them for their participation as well. They do have three different programs. One program only participates the state property tax. It's a little less lucrative, obviously, and has some different terms. There's the mixed-use redevelopment for blighted urban areas program, often called the mixed-use program. That's really what we'll be talking about here today. There's also a signature project program for very large projects that would spend over $200 million very quickly, like arenas and things of that nature. But, what we'll focus on today is the mixed-use program. It does require that the development area meet three of those seven findings that I showed previously. And the capital investment for the total project needs to be between 20 million and 200 million. It needs to represent new economic activity for the state. It has to be a mixed-use project, which means two or more uses. That would be retail, restaurant, hospitality, office, or residential. And what is eligible to recover is the full gamut of state tax revenues. So, that would be state property tax, state sales tax, individual income tax, you know, state withholdings, and state corporate tax, if you so choose. That's usually a little bit of a sticky one to go after. But, the most important piece of this that I intentionally did not gloss over, but save for last, is that the state will analyze the, what they call the net new impact of the project. And that is where they look at the project and determine to what extent this project creates additional tax revenues to the state that they would not have gotten otherwise. So, a simple way to think about that is, you know, they don't, while this project may generate certain tax revenues, not all of them are brand-new to the state. Some of those tax revenues would have gone to another restaurant in the state, or another hotel within the state. What they really try to hone in on is to what extent this project will create new activity, whether it will allow more convention business to happen here, which will bring more people, more visitors to come to the quilt museum, or visit the riverfront, things of that nature. So, they'll hire an independent consultant to look at that and determine their level of participation in the project, once we apply it to them. So, that's a really quick overview. I know it's a lot to digest about TIF, but hopefully, it'll start to take some shape. We'll go into a little bit how it fits specifically the Paducah Riverfront. As you may have seen in the TIF development plan, we have outlined a pretty, it may be hard to see there for some people in the audience, but a pretty specific boundary for the development area, where we've identified a lot of underutilized parcels, and obviously, the riverfront being the focus there, and trying to develop it. So, you know, you can see the boundary. It really focuses on the riverfront and then, works its way down Broadway to pick up a lot of the main thoroughfare and vacant and underutilized buildings that run along Broadway. And in that development area, we have worked for a couple of years now to work with different developers, business owners in the area, as well as the city and county, to get an idea of what types of projects are kind of in the works there would be a good fit. It's a pretty long list. We've looked at a riverfront park and steamboat landing improvements as a part of the project, a town square development for public gatherings, kind of a reinvention of the showcase lounge, some redeveloped and new restaurant and retail space, when you look at the vacant buildings in that area, additional hotel rooms to support convention business, reinvention of the art house or theater, which I think will be talked about later, redevelop manufacturing space, which has been vacant for a year or two now, housing, and then, all the public, more traditional, traditionally thought of, public improvements, like structured parking, infrastructure, connectivity, roadways, utility improvements, and so forth. It seems like it's difficult to get to the $20 million mark, when you think about it, but we've, you know, put the pencil to paper on a lot of this, and these projects within the development area come out to an estimated cost of $156 million. About 100 of that, 99 would be from the private sector, and 57 would be what would be considered qualifying public improvements. Now, that doesn't mean all of that has to happen, and it doesn't mean it all has to happen at once, but, you know, that is kind of, once we put all of the plans together, that's what it added up to. When you look at that on paper and assume, you know, a 20-year life, the total city taxes that would be eligible for TIF participation that would be generated would be about 14.8 million. The county would be about 5 million, and the state would be about 75 million. Now, again, the state's portion is subject to their cap. They're not going to give 75 million, I can promise you, but they will do a net new analysis, and we hope that, you know, they'll come back with a number that helps the project get off the ground. So, you know, you have 20 years to recover the taxes. You know, where we are in the process right now is to hold, you know, the first step is to hold this public hearing. The next step would be to actually create the TIF development area at the local level by ordinance and local participation agreement. Then, you would discuss the prioritization of revenues, you know, which public projects do you want to prioritize with the increment as it comes in? You know, which projects get you the most bang for the buck? And then, we would apply to the cabinet for their participation. You can apply to the cabinet while you're still trying to figure out the prioritization of revenues. Those can kind of come in either order. That's generally where we are in the process, you know, certainly happy to answer any questions you may have. I know that was a lot to take in at once, but hopefully, we can get some clarity and then, open up the public hearing.
Any questions? Commissioner Bartman? Do you have one?
I have a question, Casey. Does this have any effect on our, when tax rates are calculated each year on the compensating tax rate? Does this have any effect on it, as far as our revenue is concerned?
No. And, do you mean from a property tax standpoint, or a keys?
I just want to make sure, when they calculate the compensating tax rate, we don't lose revenue because?
No, that, no, it does not. No.
Technically, we collect the tax, and then, it's part of your revenue stream, right?
Correct. Yeah, it would have no impact on that, or the keys formula. Those are all based on taxes as they're collected, and not necessarily how they're spent, because there is no tax exemption, which, you know, is an important thing to note there.
What do we need to accomplish tonight? Do we have a goal, other than getting the information and deciding if we're behind it? Do we actually have some outcome here?
Yeah, I think the main goal would be to get the city and county to kind of agree to move forward with the process, and we'd begin, we've already sort of begun drafting what I would call the ordinance and the local participation agreement. We need kind of an indication that there's an interest in that. That's really the purpose of the public hearing, is to hear the public's input, and then, for the city and county to agree, you know, it seems like a good idea, let's see what an ordinance and local participation agreement look like. You know, we're generally on board, but we want to see the documents. You know, I think there is a resolution that could, you know, accomplish that, step forward and kind of show a good faith, and then, we would come back at a later date with an official ordinance and local participation agreement for everybody to review and actually vote on.
So, there's no requirement that we have a written document here? Just, do we all favor going forward with just throwing it, and we see the benefit?
Correct. Yeah, correct. There will be, there will be. Before you go to the state, you need to have an ordinance and a local participation agreement. But, tonight, I think everybody's just looking for an indication of, you know, how close we are to getting that or not.
We did draft that resolution that you probably saw in your packet. That's basically just that gesture of saying we're willing and interested to go forward with that process, but we still have to go, each of our independent bodies will have to pass those ordinances separately. So, you'll have that conversation in your own meeting, and so will we in ours. Isn't my correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I have a question for you, and this is something that we've kind of been discussing as we've been looking at this, about projects and the prioritization process. So, I kind of came into this, first of all, assuming, when we first started talking, that maybe we had to land on the projects pretty firmly before we moved forward with the application process, but I'm hearing that that's not necessarily the case. And so, if we were to apply, we could have more conversations, especially with the people in this room who are interested, about what that prioritization looks like and what those projects actually will turn out to be. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, obviously, you want to, there is no increment if you don't have tax-generating projects. So, you want to allocate the increment such that it will draw private investment and generate tax revenues. Otherwise, you don't have tax revenues to invest. So, the prioritization usually kind of follows that line. You know, what are the most impactful pieces we can invest in? What draws most private investment and gets the most built that, you know, will allow us to have an increment to build that? And then, you know, as those increments are allocated, there's probably, you know, what I would call a waterfall of how you allocate those. You know, this project gets the first X percentage or X amount of money. This project is next in line, and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a question. What, I mean, I read through it, and I think I understand it, but downside, what's the possible downsides to a TIF district?
That's a good question.
The risk. What are the risks?
The good thing is, there aren't a whole lot of risks. You know, the time and effort people put in, if, there are several TIF districts that have been created around the state, that nothing has happened. There is no penalty. They just were lofty goals that couldn't get off the ground, for whatever reason. And there's no penalty or fine from anybody. The only risk you would ever run is if you issued debt that relied on the incremental tax revenues, and nothing was ever generated, or the private development never came. If you built a road to nowhere, and you were counting on the incremental revenues from a project being built out there to pay for that road, you know, that's when you start taking on risk. And there are several communities that have done that, but typically, it's with a development agreement, with a developer that, you know, has to meet their end of the bargain. You know, a lot of communities will create a TIF district where the developer takes on that risk. And, you know, that really is the beauty of the TIF program, is you can align the risks with the incentives, such that you could tell the developer, if you build this project, you know, we'll reimburse you up to a certain amount for infrastructure that you put in, like parks or structured parking. If you don't generate it, you're on the hook, not us, so that you're not building the road to nowhere and hoping that the developer shows up to meet their end of the bargain. You kind of put that onus back on the developer, and they're incentivized to get the project done. They're incentivized to get the project done speedily, and they're the ones responsible for it.
Yes, I have some questions on, just administratively, how it works. So, if we go forward, form a district, TIF district, there's a magic date in the future in which all increases after that magic date, that tax from those increases goes?
To a special fund.
To the special fund? Okay. So, does the city still collect that tax, and the sheriff still collect that tax, and somewhere, someone says, uh-uh, no, that money goes here?
Yep. Yeah, you got it. There's typically an agency that's put, it's the way it's defined in statutes, is the agency. It's oftentimes the Department of Finance of whichever body is kind of leading the effort, likely the city here, mostly because they have the most tax dollars to put to it. And, you know, there is a calculation that happens. There's a pretty detailed process for reporting, particularly with the state. They ask for a lot of documentation with regard to the businesses that are in the district, so that they can be sure that they're tracking the increment correctly. And there's typically a reporting requirement built in that, you know, the agency updates the city and the county periodically as to how the TIF dollars have been generated, you know, what's been going on in the district, what it's been spent on. And that will all be laid out in the ordinance and the local participation agreement.
If there's no project, does it just kind of go into a savings fund for when there is a project?
Yeah, if there's no project, yeah, that's a little, there are maybe some scenarios where there is something, an increment that gets created, but no project.
In our community, we, I suspect, we have a PVA who will tell us that there's probably properties in this district that are due for a reassessment already, so we may have an increment.
Yeah, there may be an increment. It would be held in the special fund in escrow. You know, we had that discussion earlier, you know, what happens if there's money in the special fund at the end of the TIF, and it hasn't been spent? Typically, we put something in the documents to say, that says that those revenues go back to the taxing district that put them in on a pro-rata share. In other words, it gets split up as it was put in.
That, thank you for that. So, if you have a reassessment that happens in this window of time, that reassessed value, it gets included as net new?
It would be part of the increment. Yeah, so, it would be part of the increment. It depends on when you set the base year. The base year would likely be 2018 here. So, if there's a reassessment in 2019 or 2020, you know, obviously, those property tax revenues are going to go up to some extent. Once you hit the magic date, as you called it, the activation date, you've spent $20 million in the district, that's when you would actually begin to calculate that increment, and start to set those incremental revenues into the special fund.
I think, I think one of the things that we've got to really focus on, and it's critical that the public understand that this does not involve an increase in tax rates. And, as you were just saying, the hope is that property will gain in value in, within this district, and probably adjoining and surrounding properties. But, the taxes are based on the value of the property.
A lot to take in at once, but hopefully we can get some clarity and then open up the public hearing.
Any questions? Mr. Bartman? Do you have one?
I have a question, Casey. Does this have any effect on our, when tax rates are calculated each year on the compensating tax rate? Does it have any effect on it as far as our revenue is concerned?
No, and do you mean from a property tax standpoint or a key's?
I just want to make sure when they, when they calculate the compensating tax rate, we don't lose revenue because?
No, that, no, it does not.
Right.
No.
Technically, we collect the tax and then it's part of your revenue stream, right?
Correct. Yeah, it would have no impact on that or the keys formula. Those are all based on taxes as they're collected and not necessarily how they're spent. Because there is no tax exemption, which, you know, is an important thing to note there.
What, what do we need to accomplish tonight? Do we have a goal other than getting the information and deciding if we're behind it?
Yeah, I think.
Do we actually have some outcome here?
Yeah, I think the main goal would be to, to get the city and county to kind of agree to move forward with the process and we would begin, we've already sort of begun drafting what I would call the ordinance and the local participation agreement. We need kind of an indication that there's an interest in that. That's really the purpose of the public hearing is to hear the public's input and then for the, the city and county to agree, you know, it seems like a good idea. Let's see what an ordinance and local participation agreement look like. You know, we're generally on board, but we want to see the documents. You know, I think there is a resolution that, that could, you know, accomplish that step forward and kind of show a good faith. And then we would come back at a later date with an official ordinance and local participation agreement for everybody to review and, and actually vote on.
So there's no requirement that we have a written document here? Just do we all favor going forward with just exploring it and, and we see the benefit?
Correct. Yeah, correct. There will be, there will be, before you go to the state, you need to have an ordinance and a local participation agreement. But tonight, I think everybody's just looking for an indication of, you know, how close we are to, to getting that or not.
We did draft that resolution that you probably saw in your packet. That's basically just that gesture of saying we're willing and interested to go forward with that process, but we still have to go, each of our independent bodies will have to pass those ordinances separately. So you'll have that conversation in your own meeting and so will we in ours. Isn't my correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I have a question for you, and this is something that we've kind of been discussing as we've been looking at this about projects and the prioritization process. So I kind of came into this, first of all, assuming when we first started talking that maybe we had to land on the projects pretty firmly before we moved forward with the application process, but I'm hearing that that's not necessarily the case. And so if we were to apply, we could have more conversations, especially with people in this room who are interested about what that prioritization looks like and what those projects actually will turn out to be. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, obviously you want to, there is no increment if you don't have tax generating projects. So you want to allocate the increment such that it will, will draw private investment and generate tax revenues. Otherwise, you don't, don't have tax revenues to invest. So the, the prioritization usually kind of follows that line. You know, what are the most impactful pieces we can invest in? What draws most private investment and gets the most built that, you know, will allow us to have an increment to, to build that? And then, you know, as, as those increments are allocated, there's probably, you know, what I would call a waterfall of how you allocate those. You know, this project gets the first X percentage or X amount of money. This project is next in line and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a question. What, I mean, I've read through it and I think I understand it, but downside, what's the possible downsides to TIF district?
That's a good question.
Health in the room, I guess.
The risk. What are the risks?
The good thing is there aren't a whole lot of, of risks. You know, the time and effort people put in, if, there are several TIF districts that have been created around the state that nothing has happened. There is no penalty. They just were lofty goals that couldn't get off the ground for whatever reason. And there's no penalty or fine from anybody. The, the only risk you would ever run is if you issued debt that relied on the incremental tax revenues and nothing was ever generated or the private development never came. If you built a road to nowhere and you were counting on the incremental revenues from a project being built out there to pay for that road, you know, that's when you start taking on risk. And there are several communities that have done that, but typically it's with a development agreement with a developer that, you know, has to meet their end of the bargain. You know, a lot of communities will create a TIF district where the developer takes on that risk. And, you know, that really is the beauty of the TIF program is you can align the risks with the incentives such that you could tell the developer, if you build this project, you know, we'll reimburse you up to a certain amount for infrastructure that you put in, like parks or structured parking. If you don't generate it, you're on the hook, not us. So that you're not building the road to nowhere and hoping that the developer shows up to meet their end of the bargain. You kind of put that onus back on the developer and, and they're incentivized to get the project done. They're incentivized to get the project done speedily and, and they're the ones responsible for it.
Yes, I have some questions on just administratively how it works. So if we go forward, form a district, TIF district, there's a magic date in the future in which all increases after that magic date, that tax from those increases goes?
To a special fund.
To the special fund?
Yeah.
Okay. So does, does the city still collect that tax and the sheriff still collect that tax? And some, somewhere someone says, uh-uh, no, that money goes here?
Yep. Yeah, you got it. There's typically an agency that's put, it's the way it's defined in statutes is the agency. It's oftentimes the Department of Finance of whichever body is kind of leading the effort, likely the city here, mostly because they, they have the most tax dollars to put to it. And, and, you know, there is a calculation that happens. There's a pretty detailed process for reporting, particularly with the state. They ask for a lot of documentation with regard to the businesses that are in the district so that they can be sure that they're tracking the increment correctly. And there's a typically a reporting requirement built in that, you know, the agency updates the city and the county periodically as to how the TIF dollars have been generated, you know, what's been going on in the district, what it's been spent on. And that will all be laid out in the ordinance and the local participation agreement.
If there's no project, does it just kind of go into a savings fund for when there is a project?
Yeah, if there's no project, yeah, that's a little, there are maybe some scenarios where there is something, an increment that gets created, but no project.
In our community, we, we, I suspect we have a PVA who will tell us that there's probably properties in this district that are due for a reassessment already. So we may have an increment.
Yeah, there may be an increment. It would be held in the special fund in escrow. You know, we had that discussion earlier, you know, what happens if there's money in the special fund at the end of the TIF and it hasn't been spent? Typically, we put something in the documents to say, that says that those revenues go back to the taxing district that put them in on a, on a pro rata share. In other words, it gets split up as it was put in.
That, thank you for that. So if you have a reassessment that happens in this window of time, that reassessed value, it gets included as net new?
It would be part of the increment. Yeah. So it would be part of the increment. It depends on when you set the base year. The base year would likely be 2018 here. So if there's a reassessment in 2019 or 2020, you know, obviously those property tax revenues are going to go up to some extent. Once you hit the magic date, as you called it, the activation date, you've spent $20 million in the district, that's when you would actually begin to calculate that increment and start to set those incremental revenues into the special fund.
I think, I think one of the things that we've got to really focus on, and it's critical that the, the public understand that this does not involve an increase in tax rates. And as you were just saying, the, the hope is that property will gain in value in, within this district and probably adjoining and surrounding properties. But the taxes are based on the value of the property. There is no part of this that's a tax increase. And also we're capturing a substantial amount of tax revenue that would have gone to the state. And we get to keep that to service the debt from the infrastructure and, and the building and the development that went on. And so it may be at some point we want to, we need, we need talking points that I think say, this is not a tax increase. This is not going to, the people see a hundred million dollars and they think, what, what are these people doing? And, and so, so assuming you've got some black letter or some talking points that we could use, put it out so it's simple, it's not a confusing notion. And to me, that's, that's critical as we go forward and we be understood and have the public support for this sort of thing, if, if, if that's where we end up, supporting the project.
You got it, yeah. No, no new taxes, no tax increase associated with the TIF. It's really the closest thing you're ever going to get to, to a local option sales tax, you know, at least right now, in terms of getting money back from the state.
Commissioner Wilson has a comment or a question. Do you mind if, if Mr. Wilson?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's really to promote new development. I mean, but that's, to me, that's the bottom line of it, is all that private development that could be encouraged and spurred on in that tax increment financing area in the TIF district.
Tack on to that. This area is perfect. There's a lot of empty spaces. And then there's also 12 empty buildings from Second to Sixth Street on Broadway that could be filled potentially, hopefully with new businesses creating new jobs, more traffic downtown, more residential purchases downtown. And so I think the area certainly meets the qualifications unfortunately, but it's an opportunity to have some development in that area to create some jobs and business opportunities for people in this area.
You know, I think the other thing, and I'll get to me, Commissioner Bartman, the other thing that I've been thinking about too, and I might have mentioned this to one of you guys when I met with you, is this is a learning curve for our community. We have never done a TIF district in the city of, or county. And this is a real opportunity for us to learn what it means and learn how to do it so that we can do this to other parts of our, of our community. Because we have plenty of, of places in our community that could meet the butthole clause. So that's, that's another piece of this that I think is really important, is that we learn, we figure it out, we experience it, and then we find that other community that might need to have, this might need to happen for. So, and I know Commissioner Bartman's pretty familiar with the TIF process as you've worked with one out towards Mayfield. And it really is one of those few ways that we get to capture that state revenue back into our community without having to apply for grants or whatever other mechanisms there are. So I want to let Commissioner Bartman, if anyone else has anything.
I have a couple of questions. Did your calculations include revenue from any other taxing districts like the, the library or the Board of Health?
It did. All the property tax estimates included everything except for the fire and school district.
Okay, so included, can you, can a TIF district capture any of the hotel, motel tax, transient room tax?
No, it cannot. Those are statutorily dedicated to, you know, kind of tourism convention-based investments. What I will say is there's probably some overlap here in terms of the public infrastructure that we've identified and what some of those tax revenues could be spent on. I haven't looked specifically at, you know, what kind of outstanding debt might be relying on those tax revenues currently or if there is, you know, any kind of room for that to be invested in some of these projects. But, you know, that, that brings up a good point. And, you know, these projects don't have to be funded solely with TIF dollars. In other words, you can still go after grant programs, you can still go after other sources of revenue. This is just kind of a, a layer in the cake to try to get the project.
And as I understand, this can only be used for infrastructure development, right?
That's correct.
If you need to build a parking lot that has a public purpose or made road improvements or?
That's correct.
Utility improvements, you can pay for those. But it could not pay for, as I understand it, renovation of a building that somebody buys. Is that correct?
It could, it could subsidize some of the demo and environmental remediation if there was anything like that. But it would not pay for new, new paint or new walls or anything that would be considered.
You can't use this to help fund if you're going to have a motel, hotel come into town and it's going to cost $20 million. You couldn't just flat out allocate $2 million for the hotel. It has to be specific for the parking or the utility.
You would have to identify infrastructure needs that it is for, yes.
And the state's usually pretty straight down the line on?
Yeah, they, they have a, a pretty specific definition that they use for what they call approved public infrastructure. It's pretty broad in that it includes a lot, but it is pretty pointed in what counts.
Okay, thank you. How do you capture the income tax? So we could capture the state income tax from new employees?
Yeah, so they actually look at the withholdings that are generated within the district. Part of the state compliance is, you know, the city submits information annually about which businesses are in the district. You just provide their business name and address and tax IDs. And the state actually calculates a baseline for the businesses that were existing in the base year. And then every year forward after activation, they will calculate the new revenues and, and take the difference and, and return the increment. You actually get a check from the different departments, the, the property tax department, the sales tax department, and the individual income withholding tax department.
And you think it's likely they would use the base year 2018?
They will use the year that you get preliminary approval at the state. So at the local level, you can use the year prior. At the state, they can use the year of preliminary approval or any of the prior three years or some combination or average thereof. They typically, they will probably use 2019 at the state. Oftentimes, the base year is different at the state and local level, just because you have a little more flexibility.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yeah, is there a special attraction for business development developers to develop in the TIF district?
If they have an infrastructure need, yes. You know, they could.
Support.
Yeah, they could ask for some portion of that waterfall, as I described earlier, to be allocated as reimbursement for certain expenses that, that they would take on as a part of their project. And, and all of those would have to be approved by the board.
I apologize, I got one more question.
No, don't apologize.
I know, I think in some cases you can take the local earnings tax, you can, if I'm not mistaken, like if you have a 1% tax, you can charge 2% and the extra money goes toward development. Is that available in this case? The city payroll tax is 2%. Could they, could the people who are the new employees in that pay more than 2% and that extra money go toward development?
Statutorily, you were able to do that at the local level, just like you're able to raise your occupational tax at any point. It's not directly part of the TIF and I don't think there's any intent to do that here. You know, there are some unique cases that utilize that to pay for certain expenses, but there aren't very many of them.
If you were to increase local payroll tax, it would only be paid by those people who live within the TIF district, is that right?
It would be, it would be paid by those that work within the TIF district.
By the new employees or everybody in it?
If you chose to raise the occupational rate.
And if they chose to do that, can they use that? Does that just have to be for infrastructure development or could they use that for something else?
It could be used for other purposes.
So it's not, doesn't have the infrastructure restriction?
No, just like you could raise the tax at any point and use it for any governmental purpose.
And you can set up a district to raise the tax higher in one district than another?
You could, yeah. To be clear, I don't think there's any intent to do that here.
No. It sounds like a disincentive for businesses.
Yes, it does.
That's a question to kind of clear the table of that, because I know that's.
No, that, that is not the intent of any of the discussions we've had.
Yeah, I want, I want, again, going back to what I said earlier, you know, people, people hear what they want to hear and the converse is true as well. They sometimes hear what they don't want to hear. And they're hearing us talk about raising sales tax or, or income tax and that sort of thing. And as I read through this materials, there's, there's nothing in here about raising any sales tax rate or income tax rate or any kind of increase of anything. And, and you said a while ago that this really comes as close as we could come to a local income tax. And I know that.
Option sales tax.
A local option sale, I'm sorry, local option sales tax. But your point being that it is not a local option sales tax. The sales tax that is generated will be the same unaffected by this city or county TIF. We're, we're simply allowed to intercept or capture what that would be anyway, but it's generating more sales tax. And we can, we can then capture that rather than it go to?
Frankfurt.
Frankfurt.
In fact, we do not statutorily have the authority to do a local option sales tax. So we can't even do it. It's not even a part of the conversation at this point in Kentucky.
That's exactly why the TIF program was created. A lot of communities were coming to the state and asking for help with certain projects and the state needed a, a program to kind of determine which projects are more worthwhile than others. So they put together the statutory guidelines and, and the approval process and, and then actually the calculating of the increment, you know, meaning the project has to succeed for the increment to be generated so you don't have roads to nowhere.
Mr. Abraham, do you have anything you want to add or ask?
Well, I'm looking at this as a tool that, that's available. If we can get our, what we're doing, looking at and decide, okay, let's, let's move cautiously through this, making sure that we understand every step of the way. I think it's, it's a great possibility. And I think you answered a lot of questions as far as, well, if this happens, can this happen? Well, statutorily, you can't do that. You can do this, but you can't do that. I think those are the type of things that, that makes, that settles with me to make sure that we're in the right lane. There's a lot of, there's a lot of wise folks up here. We have different questions. We need to make sure that all of those, that we're comfortable that all of those questions have been answered before moving forward. And we haven't even heard from the, from the audience yet. So I'm, I'm fine with what the, what the, what the intent of this TIF district piece was meant to do. I think that's, I think that's needed. So, so far, so good.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson has a question.
Well, I was just going to say, I know your company's worked with other communities throughout the state on TIF district. Is there one that stands out to you that would be similar to Paducah that's had some success?
I would say the most similar, and, and everyone's probably tired of hearing it, is Owensboro.
Oh, okay. That's okay.
You can answer before you ask.
I've been with Owensboro folks today, that's fine.
I'm just starting to warm up to you, too.
It's okay, we can talk about it.
Yeah, that's all right.
Well, you know, it is, it is, I would say, one of your advantages, you know, you do, you know, from the state's perspective, have a little bit of an advantage being on the border. You'll see places where TIF dollars from the state's allocation go are typically on the border, Louisville, Northern Kentucky, Owensboro, because you think about the competition with the neighboring state and how you can generate what they call net new tax dollars to the state more easily. In other words, if you have a restaurant or a business that locates on this side of the river versus the other side of the river, that has a pretty big impact. And even when you think about the residential component, you know, you pay taxes where you live, no matter where you work. So, you know, it makes it harder for places like Lexington and central Kentucky to make an argument that the, the activity that goes on there is truly net new because you're, you know, a two-hour drive from the border. Hour, hour and a half.
Well, so not to talk about the O-Town a lot more, but they did a TIF district in their downtown area. That's, I guess that's what I'm asking for as an example of one you've worked with that you saw that had worked well.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, they did. They used it to help fund their Bluegrass Music Museum. And they're looking at doing some parking and different things like that in their downtown. They've actually done another one out off Highway 54 at Gateway Commons, which got a pretty good amount of state, of state incentive with it as well. That was mostly to pay for sanitary and sewer improvements on that side of town. It actually is adjacent to their regional water authority.
Would we build an ice skating rink? Would it have to be city-owned, I guess?
It would have to be city-owned, yeah. Public building, you could.
We have a future hockey player up here. Competitive hockey.
I'd like to see that.
Commissioner, I think, Commissioner Jones has a question to listen to.
Well, since we're talking about Owensboro, I'm, I'm certain in some people's minds, they are complaining about the amount of debt they have in Owensboro. And is that the result of a TIF or is that the result of borrowing too much money for a TIF?
Or is it not related?
Or is it not related?
Yeah, I would say it's maybe a, a little bit of neither.
Okay.
Who said not related?
They, we actually set their TIF district up, we set their TIF district up after they had already redone their riverfront and built their new convention center. They did that all with an insurance premium tax. So, you know, we were introduced to Owensboro a little bit after that. We were actually looking at a marina, a potential marina project down there. And so, well, you know, you, you probably could have done a pretty good downtown TIF district before you invested all of this. And they've, they've taken on a lot of different projects and invested in their community. And I know they're feeling a little bit of the heat. I don't think any of it was dependent upon TIF revenues. I know they are expecting to be paid back some for the Bluegrass Music Museum with TIF revenues. And, you know, hopefully, we're going to submit an increment request this year actually for both projects. So some of those monies will start to come in from the state.
Well, I feel better about talking about Owensboro.
What about the riverfront development? So we put together a proposal to the Department of Transportation last summer, looking at developing the, where the millings are off the transient boat dock and finishing that out. It was really designed around being a public space, so maybe a future expansion at the farmer's market, open play area, those kinds of things. Are those eligible expenditures for this?
Yes, those are all eligible and those are actually included in the $57 million number. So we have looked at those, the steamboat landing and all of those different improvements that have not been made to date. You can't go back and collect what you've already spent, but looking at future expenditures that might happen in that area of that nature, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions before we start the public hearing?
I'd just like to add that you have to realize too, though, that comment there is the increment generated by the TIF. So you have to have that revenue source to be able to fund that project. But more importantly, I've had a lot of TIF experience in my last community. We actually had four TIFs and they just do a bang-up job for economic development. When you, when you do talk to developers, in this case, industrial won't really apply, but you do talk to your commercial developers, they do inquire, do you have a TIF? And, because that's part of their equation, if you will. They're looking at what type of public infrastructure is going to be necessary for their project. And when we require them to do those development projects, that we have those needs, basically offset some of the development costs, which in turn, once they make that investment into your community, then generates the increment. So basically, it's a very successful program. It goes back to what Judge Clymer said, it's not a tax increase. Basically, what's being paid now will always be captured by the, the county and by the, the city and by the state. But the increment then is going to be captured by the special revenue fund to go back into basically feeding the beast, if you will, that growth. So the more growth you have, the more increment you generate, the more growth you have. And then at the end of the 20 years, and then what's remaining in there unutilized then gets dispersed back to the originating bodies. It's a really good program. It's a good, as Commissioner Abraham said, it's a good tool in the tool belt for us. It's, it's a marketing tool. It's a, a positive thing for the community I'm very excited about.
You know, we do have a little moment of industrial development happening with Jancana because they are, the AmerisourceBergen is in our footprint. So I think that will be great learning experience again for us of how do we help an industrial developer in this process as well. So be, again, thinking about this opportunity for doing TIFs in other parts of the county even without the city, where you guys have land, could be an, an opportunity for the future, for sure.
Great tool for industrial development.
Yeah. I'm going to ask for public comment, if that's okay. Thank you so much, Casey, for being here with us.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, very good job.
Absolutely. Does anyone have? I saw some people grab some pieces of paper. I didn't see them make it up to the desk, but if you have one, come on up. And you can just hand it to the clerk?
Madam Mayor, I think you actually have to open up a public hearing.
Just kidding, thank you, sir. All right, here we go. Just do that informally, I guess. I don't have a piece of paper for that. All right, so we are going to officially open up the public hearing for the city of Paducah and McCracken County TIF district. And Mr. Award is going to get us started. Thank you.
Well, first off, I think this is probably one of the best ideas you've come up with.
That's cool coming from you, actually. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a compliment, isn't it? Well, I mean, you have to look north to Marion, Illinois. They've They've had it, what, years and years? And then I think Bill's associated with the college over there, they've got a TIF district, right?
Working on it.
Working on it. Then the revitalization of the Mayfield Shopping Center is a TIF district too, I think. So I think it's got this possibility. Could I ask him a question? How does this work with those opportunity zones you hear about?
They can all be layered together.
They can?
Yeah, it's not mutually exclusive.
Oh.
Yep, so you can do both.
So we're gonna have two tools in the tool belt?
Oh, so they can work together. Not, one is not kick out the other.
You got it.
Okay. Well, another thing, after I studied that TIF thing, if you were to get a hotel, say it's to put a Broadway, and then all these apartments, say 200, would you have to have to probably build a parking garage?
That could be, that could be a necessary piece of infrastructure, no need to qualifications.
Okay. I guess that's all, then.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. Michael Cochran.
I have a question about the district lines on it. I saw it went down Broadway, but I'm curious as to why it didn't go down Kentucky, because you got a $5.6 million project with for-profit, nonprofit, and new employees coming in that could, that tax could be captured as part of this.
I wrote that down.
I'm curious as to why Broadway and not one street over to capture that.
And Casey or Tamara, if you're, if you're going to respond, would you come up to the microphone so that the people watching on TV? I think it's a great question, actually, and I did write that down to discuss after, but I'm glad you asked.
Yeah, so obviously, you know, drawing that boundary can be difficult and a lot of times the discussion is, well, why not, well, if you just go over one more block, there might be something that happens. I think it's important to focus on the necessary infrastructure and not try to lose sight of, you know, what the intent of the program is, which is to provide infrastructure that will facilitate development. It's not necessarily to capture every bit of potential incremental dollars you can get. And as you start to stretch that boundary out, meeting those seven qualifications of blight and particularly the need for infrastructure becomes a little more difficult to meet. So as you do that, you begin to pick up more businesses that are existing and operating fine, the streets are fine and have been worked on. And I think it, it becomes, you know, a little bit of a slippery slope to try to capture increment and instead of focusing on areas that really need it, because there, we've got $57 million of infrastructure in that area. You know, as you start to stretch that out, that number goes up and you're not sure exactly how much the increment will go up.
Casey, he's specifically talking about the Market Square area and I think it is in the district.
It actually looks like it's in it. Does this, do you?
I think it is.
The Market House is in it.
There's a red, there's a red outline there and then the yellow.
It's hard to tell.
There's a bigger map at the back of your book.
Yes, there is.
Ah, there we go. That one I can see. Yeah, and it includes Market House.
Yeah, Market House is in it.
It doesn't, their new area.
It's not a Kentucky, no, it's just the, it's just the Market House Square.
Yeah, it's not their new area.
It's correct. It's not in there.
It's, it's the, the Market House Theater.
It's just the Market House Theater, not the rest of the property.
Like Casey was indicating, what we're trying to identify is the areas where we know there's going to have to be some public infrastructure improvements and then the areas that are going to be able to generate increment to be able to support those public infrastructure improvements.
Yeah.
And then we had a lot of variations of maps and this is the one we landed on after what, a year of discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Casey.
Good question. We couldn't capture that as part of the TIF district if it's already under development, could we? Because that's to be the, meet the but-for requirement, is that right? Somebody's in the middle of a $5 million project.
Yeah, that's correct.
We couldn't capture that in the TIF district because it's not what they call but-for. The development only, the development has to take place only because of the incentive from the TIF district. It's already in the works. We couldn't capture that under the TIF, is that correct?
Yeah, that'd be a clear violation of the but-for clause.
Even if they haven't started construction?
No. He's not asking that, though. He's saying if it's under construction.
But if they haven't started construction, which you haven't on some of yours?
Ours is in the next two years.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the, so there's a couple of different things. So the, the tax increment is calculated based on the base year and the activation year. So regardless of what goes on in the boundary and when you look at, you know, in this case, 2018 at the local level and 2019 at the state level and whatever taxes are generated currently would be your existing tax base. Whenever you activate the magic activation date, those taxes will be higher presumably than they are currently and that increment can go back to fund projects. If money has been spent within the district prior to the state's preliminary approval date, so once we get an application to the state, they will hopefully issue preliminary approval, the money spent after that date will count towards that $20 million or the, the $20 million minimum. So, you know, the question maybe is, you know, do you want to incentivize a project that you think may happen anyway or is already underway? That's a little bit different than what counts towards the capital investment numbers and towards the increment generated.
But that's also nonprofit property, so it's not, it's already tax exempt, so that would not have any effect on it, would it?
It wouldn't, it probably wouldn't generate any property taxes.
It's a nonprofit agency.
There may be some.
It's doing that work, so there wouldn't be taxes anyway.
There's no increment.
Right.
So I got, I do have another question. Who, who decides what projects get funded?
That would be you all. So I mentioned previously, you know, at some point you'll have to prioritize, you know, where do we think we'll get the most bang for our buck? You know, what will draw the most increment, what will bring the most private investment? And that's where.
Highest-paying jobs.
You got it. Yeah.
Well, again, it's not projects that are funded, it's infrastructure that's funded.
Infrastructure projects, yeah. Infrastructure projects that incentivize private projects.
And that doesn't.
Yeah, just a second, Commissioner Walker.
That doesn't have to be decided tonight then, right?
No, it does not.
Okay.
That doesn't really have to be decided until, until you have somebody that needs to spend the money on that project and they count on the repayment.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we don't have any other public comment tonight because that's, we're in public hearing right now. Anyone else want to say anything last minute? Would you go grab one of these, Phyllis, and, oh, good, well, come on up. Thank you. You can actually just hand that to Jim.
Has this already been pretty much decided? I mean, is it, I know that.
You can address us, we'll, we'll answer, yeah.
So all of you have known about this for a while or not? I mean, I, I just, I'm inquiring because I know the end of 2019, it sounds like when everything is pretty much put into effect prior to the end of it, right? It's, only goes to the end of 19, 2019?
I don't think I'm clear about your question.
Okay. Whenever you decide whether we go with this as the TIF project, has it been pretty much decided already? I mean, were you aware of this prior to the news media yesterday afternoon?
Oh, yes. I mean, this process is a really long process. So we've been engaging, the city has now, the county, the fiscal court has probably known in detail for a month or 45 days.
Oh, I see, I was, I was not aware of any of that and so, or probably would have had a lot more questions. Okay.
Well, you're welcome to ask questions now or if you want to follow up and ask the office questions afterwards, whichever way.
So the investors have already started to, like the hotel people and?
No, no.
No, all right. As far as retail, so it sounds like right here on Broadway, it's going to be retail.
Not necessarily. Now, again, there's a, there's a list of options and as you're hearing us talk about, we have to prioritize those projects.
Okay.
So not necessarily. It's, it's a big, long menu of items that we'll begin discussing once we get the approval from the state to move forward.
Okay. So you've pretty much answered my questions as far as knowing now that it has been in effect or been talked about for a few years.
It's 2007.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
So do I understand what we're talking about tonight is defining and going forward with this district. We're not talking about specific projects, specific developers, specific infrastructure and, I think that, that needs to be cleared about.
That's right.
We're not voting on a hotel or retail or sidewalks or anything.
That's correct. Good.
And the county's role with this night, we have to kind of waive our rights to the increment tax, but because we're voting for that doesn't mean that we are sharing in any project obligation as of this day.
Right. There are no project obligations.
And as of tonight, you're basically saying that you're, you're resolved to look at it. It's not a firm commitment tonight because it's going to take an actual ordinance and an interlocal governmental agreement to be able to do that.
Are we going to vote tonight?
It's on the table to vote.
Just as the resolution.
Just as the resolution.
And I don't want to complicate that, but I kind of get spanked for failure to disclose I think, Mayor, both you and I have some interest in real estate inside the district and I just want to make, it doesn't seem to me that there's any inherent benefit from owning property inside the district. Nothing special is going to happen to our property because of this district, right?
I can't think of anything that would.
But for the record.
Thanks for bringing me into it, Eddie, or Commissioner Jones, sorry. Oh, that's great. Okay, so any more public? I don't want to miss, we're in public hearing, I'm reminded. Anyone else?
Can I have one more?
I'm feeling generous. Come on up. You got to speak in the microphone, though, so the, the people watching can hear.
Is there, okay, I'll wait till I get started. Is there going to be administrative costs for this? Is it going to require another city department or will a present city department take it over?
A finance department will take on the finance piece of this.
It'll run through what we currently have.
And then, yes.
It won't have to have a new department or anything?
No, sir. That's a good question. All right. Anyone else? One of these? Are you sure? Going once? Going twice? All right. Well, if everyone up here is okay, I'm going to make the motion to go into executive session, if that's okay with everyone. We will be meeting in the ante room and then we will, we will be coming back out here. So if you want to stick around, I don't think we'll be there long, okay?
Can you state the purpose? What's the purpose?
I'm going to read that right now.
Okay.
Does, does Judge Clymer also have one or am I just doing this? Do you know? Does Judge Clymer need to do a motion as well?
You will.
Okay, okay. All right. I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.8101B and a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G. Second, thank you. If we can call roll for the city commission, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Harland?
Aye.
And then for the county, ask for a motion for if we enter into executive session for the same, the future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate permitted by KRS 618101B and a specific proposal by a business entity where a public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G. That motion.
I'll move.
Second. On favor, aye.
Aye.
Polls, no.
All right. Okay, we'll go back to that room and we'll be right back. All right, okay, we'll go back to that room, and we'll be right back.
That the Board of Commissioners reconvene in open session.
Second.
Thank you. If you'll call roll, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. McElroy?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we fiscal court reconvene in open session.
Second.
No opposed?
No in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Excellent. All right, we're back in. Hello, everyone. Thanks for staying. All right. Before we move ahead, I am going to ask everyone, we talked about before with Casey, that one part of this process could be that tonight we could pass a resolution together that just commits us to move forward with ordinances. The details of those ordinances in our local agreement could be worked out in the future as we work on that. But just tonight, as a gesture of moving ahead together, there is a resolution on the table.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Would it cause a hardship if we delayed and approved it Monday night? The only reason I'm saying is a technical thing, and I don't know if the city attorney said it wouldn't be a problem, but it's not on our agenda to vote. It's only informational only. And we can express our view tonight and then reaffirm it on Monday night?
I think that's fine. And we can do the same at our meeting on Tuesday.
I'll make a call on it, but I just want to make sure that technically we don't run into a technical issue.
I think it's open.
You said city attorney, but it's county attorney.
County attorney. Yeah, we can't afford the city attorney.
Okay, so if everyone's okay with that, then we will send these resolutions to each body, and then you guys discuss it at your Monday meeting, and we'll discuss it at our Tuesday. Is that fine with everyone?
That's fine.
Okay, all right. Well-
Thank you. I just want to make sure we don't get into technical.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, well then let's move ahead and ask Mr. Hal Sullivan and Darlene. Darlene Mazon's coming first. I'll let you introduce your team.
Well, good evening again. I'm honored to be a part of this Virgin Voyage with you all, with this federal group of first joint session. I'm Darlene Mazon, Chair of the Paducah Art House Alliance Board, and we are tasked with restoring the Columbia Theater, which you can see now on the screen. I know I gave you all a packet a few weeks ago that had all of the specifics about the project in it, but I wanted tonight to give you just a little bit of background about where we've come with the project since we began this journey. It was 2013, and I was serving as the Main Street Board Chair at that time. And every year, we determined what we thought our signature project should be. And that particular year, we determined that it absolutely should be the salvation of the Columbia Theater, one of the city's most historic iconic landmarks. At that time, we created a task force, which ultimately evolved into what is now the Paducah Art House Alliance Board, which is overseeing the restoration of the theater and the alliance with Maiden Alley Cinema for Programming. And in the past five years, we have accomplished a great deal in terms of the project. First and foremost, we have been blessed with a lot of volunteers who are here tonight, who love this theater and who have physically cleaned the basement, the backstage, the balcony, the auditorium. We have pulled down rotting curtains and velvet pieces and carpet. But we've also salvaged a lot of architectural items to keep for posterity and some for us also to use as prototypes for preservation. We conducted a feasibility study in 2015 with Susan Palmer Associates, which concluded that the goal of restoring the theater was financially within our reach in the community, which was very good news for us. We hired Westlake Reed Liskowski, one of the foremost historic theater design firms in the country, to create a concept plan for us. We also worked with the International Fine Art Conservation Group to do an extensive paint study for us, providing a lot of details about the original decor of the theater. And with the good contributions of several grants and local fundraisers, we've been able to fully restore the beautiful original fire curtain. We've completed an asbestos abatement cleanup, and we have secured construction documents for Phase One, which is what we're talking about tonight of the restoration. That Phase One includes the complete stabilization of the building, as well as the restoration of the facade. This will literally save the building, which is, of course, of tantamount importance to us, so that its physical integrity will be maintained and preserved, and we can be assured that we can move in to restore, of course, the interior for future development. That preservation also allays the fears of the theater's neighbors on that block, that it will not go the way of other downtown buildings in our historic district, which we obviously want to avoid at all costs, since that is the very heart and essence of where we are as a downtown destination. So in the packets that we provided to you guys a few weeks ago, we included the design plan, the cost for Phase One, and our belief that the project is critical to the continued development of the downtown corridor. We basically see the project as fulfilling these end results: the preservation of a landmark building in the midst of our historic district, the positive impact of bringing more economic vitality to that corridor, and the opportunity to provide entertainment and educational programming to a really wide variety of mixed socioeconomic audiences, both locally and throughout the region. In total, to bring together really a thriving cultural center in the heart of Paducah and McCracken County. Now, this just in from the Columbia News Network, there are two breaking news items that I bring to you from last week. Because of the chamber visit to the legislature last week, I was able to talk to Secretary Parkinson, Don Parkinson, of Tourism, Arts and Heritage. He was here a few years ago. It's been two or three years ago, right, Landy? And we were able to get him into the theater, and he was very enthused about the project then, but it's been a while, of course, and we've made more progress. So I was able to talk to him and Regina Stivers, the deputy, and they are very excited about the project. Obviously, our project fits completely within their umbrella for tourism, arts and heritage. So these are things that, obviously, they want to see become successful around the state. And this week, just this week, we were invited by Preservation Kentucky to be a part of something they're calling Tour 120. It's an event this summer designed to feature preservation projects in every county in Kentucky. I also think that this building should probably be a part of that. We were past the deadline, but Betsy Hadfield said, no, we really want this to be successful. We will do everything we can to get more buildings and more projects involved. So we're really happy that we can be a part of that. That's going to be ongoing this summer. Now, I'd like to have Hal do the second part of this, and then we'd be happy to answer questions after that, so that you have a full complement of what the proposal is involving.
Thank you, Darlene, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen. As we all know, community development is an endless task, and rebuilding our historical buildings provides a catalyst for new business and to flourish and make the downtown and McCracken County and Paducah a destination of choice. And so, we, like many of you, I was involved in the fundraising efforts that went on for the Carson Center while I was Chairman of the Convention Center Corporation. And along with the CCC Board, we oversaw the construction of what's now the Bill and Meredith Schrader Expo Center, along with the Carson Center. And these projects were made possible by a community partnership that brought private and public monies together. And I truly believe that the Columbia Theater restoration and reuse project is a timely opportunity for us to have that happen again and use one of the tools that was created during that time period specifically to finance this kind of project in the central business district. So I really think that it would create a win-win, not just for the city and the county, but for Western Kentucky and the state at large. And I hope that you all will agree with that. As Darlene mentioned, the Paducah Art House Alliance Board has gone by the book through an advertising process and review and accepting qualified contractor bids to undertake Phase One for this particular structure. It's imperative that we stabilize and contain further deterioration to avoid another loss in our downtown inventory, such as the Kresge Building. So Ray Black and Son has been retained and has taken hard bids on this critical stabilization phase. And while we continue to pursue local, federal and state grants to help mitigate costs, we're asking the city and the county to partner together that will allow for the financing to take place for the balance of our needs in this Phase One project, which is a stabilization project of the building itself. The city-county partnership will assure the community, and most importantly, our potential supporters and donors going forward, that we are united in this community development project and enable the Columbia Capital Campaign Group to embark on raising funds to bring the facility to life, both physically and economically, in the future. So I know I'm preaching to the choir, because from our conversations with many of you, we share this common goal to save this really important historical building in downtown and make it a viable part of our economy. Our proposal is exactly the same process that the city and the county went through in funding for the Carson Center, as well as the Schrader Expo building projects. The county acts as the collector of the local hotel room tax, and then would need to update the interlocal agreement that exists between the city and the county to allow for the use of part of this revenue flow to service a bond issue for this Phase One of the Columbia Restoration Project. The city would be the issuer of this project, and the county would just agree to pass through the specific tax revenue for this purpose. At the current levels, even assuming no growth in the room tax itself, there's ample revenue to support a $1.5 million bond issue without reducing the CCC or the Convention and Visitors Bureau's allocation, and without taking from the city and the county's actual budget itself. So timing is everything, and time is of the essence here in this project. And we feel like we've got good community support. Interest rates are historically low, making the financing even-
Second.
No opposed? No in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Excellent. All right, we're back in. Hello, everyone. Thanks for staying.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Before I move ahead, I am going to ask everyone, we talked about before with Casey that one part of this process could be that tonight we could pass a resolution together that just commits us to move forward with ordinances. The details of those ordinances and interlocal agreement could be worked out in the future as we work on that. But just tonight, as a gesture of moving ahead together, there is a resolution on the table.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Would it cause a hardship if we delayed and approved it Monday night? The only reason I'm saying is a technical thing, and I don't know if the city attorney said it wouldn't be a problem, but it's not on our agenda to vote. It's only informational only. And we can express our view tonight and then reaffirm it on Monday night?
I think that's fine. And we can do the same at our meeting on Tuesday.
I just want to make sure that technically we don't run into a technical issue.
I think it's open.
You said city attorney, but it's county attorney.
County attorney. Yeah, we can't afford the city attorney.
So if everyone's okay with that, then we will send these resolutions to each body and then you guys discuss it at your Monday meeting and we'll discuss it at our Tuesday. Is that fine with everyone?
That's fine.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we don't get into technical.
Sure. Absolutely. Okay. Well, then let's move ahead and ask Mr. Hal Sullivan and Darlene. Darlene Mazone's coming first. I'll let you introduce your team.
Well, good evening again. I'm honored to be a part of this virgin voyage with you all, with this federal group of joint, first joint session. I'm Darlene Mazone, Chair of the Paducah Art House Alliance Board, and we are tasked with restoring the Columbia Theater, which you can see now on the screen. I know I gave you all a packet a few weeks ago that had all of the specifics about the project in it, but I wanted tonight to give you just a little bit of background about where we've come with the project since we began this journey. It was 2013, and I was serving as the Main Street Board Chair at that time, and every year we determined what we thought our signature project should be. In that particular year, we determined that it absolutely should be the salvation of the Columbia Theater, one of the city's most, you know, historic iconic landmarks. At that time, we created a task force, which ultimately evolved into what is now the Paducah Art House Alliance Board, which is overseeing the restoration of the theater and the alliance with Maiden Alley Cinema for Programming. And in the past five years, we have accomplished a great deal in terms of the project. First and foremost, we have been blessed with a lot of volunteers who are here tonight, who love this theater and who have physically cleaned the basement, the backstage, the balcony, the auditorium. We have pulled down rotting curtains and velvet, you know, pieces and carpet. But we've also salvaged a lot of architectural items to keep for posterity and some for us also to use as prototypes for preservation. We conducted a feasibility study in 2015 with Susan Palmer Associates, which concluded that the goal of restoring the theater was financially within our reach in the community, which was very good news for us. We hired Westlake Reed Liskowski, one of the foremost historic theater design firms in the country, to create a concept plan for us. We also worked with the International Fine Art Conservation Group to do an extensive paint study for us, providing a lot of details about the original decor of the theater. And with the good contributions of several grants and local fundraisers, we've been able to fully restore the beautiful original fire curtain. We've completed an asbestos abatement cleanup, and we have secured construction documents for Phase One, which is what we're talking about tonight of the restoration. That Phase One includes the complete stabilization of the building as well as the restoration of the facade. This will literally save the building, which is, of course, you know, of tantamount importance to us, so that its physical integrity will be maintained and preserved, and we can be assured that we can move in to restore, of course, the interior for future development. That preservation also allays the fears of the theater's neighbors on that block, that it will not go the way of other downtown buildings in our historic district, which we obviously want to avoid at all costs, since that is the very heart and essence of where we are as a downtown destination. So in the packets that we provided to you guys a few weeks ago, we included the design plan, the cost for Phase One, and our belief that the project is critical to the continued development, you know, of the downtown corridor. We basically see the project as fulfilling these end results. The preservation of a landmark building in the midst of our historic district, the positive impact of bringing more economic vitality to that corridor, and the opportunity to provide entertainment and educational programming to a really wide variety of mixed socioeconomic audiences, both locally and throughout the region. In total, to bring together really a thriving cultural center in the heart of Paducah, of Paducah and McCracken County. Now, this just in, from the Columbia News Network, there are two breaking news items that I brought, bring to you from last week. Because of the chamber visit to the legislature last week, I was able to talk to Secretary Parkinson, Don Parkinson, of Tourism, Arts and Heritage. He was here a few years ago. It's been two or three years ago, right, Landy? And we were able to get him into the theater, and he was very enthused about the project then, but it's been a while, of course, and we've made more progress. So I was able to talk to him and Regina Stivers, the deputy, and they are very excited about the project. Obviously, our project fits completely within their umbrella for tourism, arts and heritage. So these are things that, obviously, they want to see become successful around, you know, the state. And this week, just this week, we were invited by Preservation Kentucky to be a part of something they're calling Tour 120. It's an event this summer designed to feature preservation projects in every county in Kentucky. I also think that this building should probably be a part of that. We were past the deadline, but Betsy Hadfield said, no, we really want this to be successful. We will do everything we can to get more buildings and more projects involved. So we're really happy that we can be a part of that. That's going to be ongoing this summer. Now, I'd like to have Hal do the second part of this, you know, and then we'd be happy to answer questions after that, so that you have a full complement of what, you know, the proposal is involving.
Thank you, Darlene, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And as we all know, community development is an endless task, and rebuilding our historical buildings provides a catalyst for new business and to flourish and make the downtown in McCracken County and Paducah a destination of choice. And so, we, like many of you, I was involved in the fundraising efforts that went on for the Carson Center while I was Chairman of the Convention Center Corporation. And along with the CCC Board, we oversaw the construction of what's now the Bill and Meredith Schrader Expo Center, along with the Carson Center. And these projects were made possible by a community partnership that brought private and public monies together. And I truly believe that the Columbia Theater Restoration and Reuse Project is a timely opportunity for us to have that happen again and use one of the tools that was created during that time period specifically to finance this kind of project in the Central Business District. So I really think that it would create a win-win, not just for the city and the county, but for Western Kentucky and the state at large, and I hope that you all will agree with that. As Darlene mentioned, the Paducah Art House Alliance Board has gone by the book through an advertising process and review and accepting qualified contractor bids to undertake Phase One for this particular structure. It's imperative that we stabilize and contain further deterioration to avoid another loss in our downtown inventory, such as Kresge Building. So Ray Black and Son has been retained and has taken the hard bids on this critical stabilization phase. And while we continue to pursue local, federal and state grants to help mitigate costs, we're asking the city and the county to partner together that will allow for the financing to take place for the balance of our needs in this Phase One project, which is a stabilization project of the building itself. This city-county partnership will assure the community, and most importantly, our potential supporters and donors going forward, that we are united in this community development project and enable the Columbia Capital Campaign Group to embark on raising funds to bring the facility to life, both physically and economically, in the future. So I know I'm preaching to the choir, because from our conversations with many of you, we share this common goal to save this really important historical building in downtown and make it a viable part of our economy. Our proposal is exactly the same process that the city and the county went through in funding for the Carson Center, as well as the Schrader Expo building projects. The county acts as the collector of the local hotel room tax, and then would need to update the interlocal agreement that exists between the city and the county to allow for the use of part of this revenue flow to service a bond issue for this Phase One of the Columbia Restoration Project. The city would be the issuer of this project, and the county would just agree to pass through the specific tax revenue for this purpose. At the current levels, even assuming no growth in the room tax itself, there's ample revenue to support a $1.5 million bond issue without reducing the CCC or the Convention and Visitors Bureau's allocation and without taking from the city and the county's actual budget itself. So timing is everything, and time is of the essence here in this project. And we feel like we've got good community support. Interest rates are historically low, making the financing even more affordable. So what we're asking you to do is to take action to allow this Phase One stabilization project to proceed by authorizing the financing as called for in the statute that was created specifically to address the development of fine arts facilities within the Central Business District. And we believe that there is capacity there to do that, with some to spare, actually. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions that you may have about where we have. And I know in the package, some of you have seen some of the preliminary construction numbers and things of that nature, so.
And just to be clear, we will not be making a decision on this tonight. So this is information gathering.
I have a question. Hal, what would the debt payment be on 1.5 million estimated?
The part of the statute that allows for debt service to be used for this purpose was actually created during that time period when the city and the county were working together to generate financing for the Carson Center and the Expo Center. That debt is still being carried today. So with the growth in the hotel motel room taxes, the existing debt service is running about $585,000 a year for the existing structure. So there are actually two issues that are outstanding. Both have been refinanced over some period of time. And so of what we see as the annual 2018 revenues out there, the existing Convention Center debt service is 584. The series 2016 refinancing for part of the Carson Center issue is 101, and I'm talking 2018 numbers here, as we started this investigation back at the end of the year last year. Adding those two together, that would give a remaining revenue available for debt service somewhere around $65,000, okay? The way we would envision this happening is that it could be amortized over 15 to 18 years to carry both the existing financing as well as the proposed financing. And then, and the new project money would be back-end loaded, if you will, because the debt service needs to go towards retiring the first two issues, and then once that is complete, it would actually, those revenues could be used to complete the bulk of the financing.
Do your estimates include the 2017 or 16?
2000.
Bond. I mean, we just had new bond issues to fund the kitchen and the bubble.
Mm-hmm. But that was, I don't think that was part of this particular financing package the city did that. Was it included in this issue here for 2016?
It's a separate issue.
Okay. So that's the 100, that's the $101,000 debt service that you have right now for that.
So is this debt service going to be covered by 2%? So the transient tax is 6%?
That's correct.
1% goes to the operation convention center, 2% to debt service, and then 3% to the visitors' bureau?
As I understand it, yes.
We're talking about how we're going to spend the 2%?
That's correct.
And that there's enough room in that 2% to cover this debt service?
The existing debt and an additional issue.
Okay. And as I understand, we aren't allowed to charge that 2% unless it's going to pay debt
Typically, it needs to be used for the debt service for this particular type of project within the Central Business District, according to the.
So you're saying we now have about a $65,000 cushion, is that right?
That's, that is correct.
But that includes the original bonds, I think, which were redone in 2010?
Mm-hmm.
And then we just did a new bond issue last year?
Right.
And is that included in the, what, $685,000?
Yes.
I would have to pull John up. John, you still here?
Is Jonathan still here? I didn't see him here.
There he is.
There he is.
He likes the numbers in front of him.
Those bonds were just issued, I think, right as I arrived here. Jonathan's a bummer.
Yeah, the, what you just said, originally borrowed in 2001, refied in 10, and then we borrowed from CFSP $3 million in January of 17. That's what.
And the transient room tax is paying CFSP back?
Both of them, yes.
And that's the 100, is that the 101 per year payment?
It's in that range, just higher than that, yeah.
Okay, okay. With all that, there's still money left. And I think Commissioner Bartman's right. There's a spreadsheet. I don't know if you guys included that in your packet or not, but that might be a good thing to share with this commission and the board, is that spreadsheet of showing how that, the big debt gets paid off over time.
And actually, your fiscal agent advisor would be more than happy to provide updated information about that, so. This is a tool that already exists.
Right.
For this purpose, for development in the downtown district. And it really is critical for our success and the success of the project to have the city and the county participate together in this, to show that unity in development and right in the crosshairs, I think, with some of the stated goals that both the city and the county have for the community in the county and Western Kentucky. So we hope you'll give it your full consideration.
Let me make a comment. I think anything we can do to promote the theater arts program. I was blown away a couple of years ago. I worked for the paper for years, and I did a lot of rewrites of the Market House releases, but I didn't realize exactly what they did until they had their open house down there and saw the buildings they have. And my granddaughter got involved in that, and it's amazing what they've done down there. And that's all because people had the forward thought, probably 50 years ago, to redevelop the Market House into a museum and theater and art gallery. And the job that you do down there is just fantastic and unbelievable of what's done. Again, I was blown away when I went down and toured and saw all the buildings they have down there and all the kids involved, and my granddaughter's somewhat shy, but when she got involved in that, she was not shy when she was down on the stage. So I think anything we can do to restore and maintain the arts program and the theater arts program, and I think part of the Market House Theater Arts education programs are going to be incorporated into this project. So I think whether or not this works, I think we really need to look at the numbers hard, because if we get into a recession and it comes up short, then we've got to find a way to make up the money for it. So I favor the project, and I hope we can make it work.
Thank you.
I think it's important for us to also think about stabilization of that whole block and, you know, look at the numbers of if we don't stabilize it, what happens and what does that cost us? And we need some numbers on that, too. But I think that's, if you don't care about that, you should care about that, you know, keeping that block stable, both as an icon, as a draw to other businesses, but also preventing.
Well, let me off of something that we didn't mention before. One of the things that, there's so many levels and so many layers to this, and certainly educational, arts education is part of that, entertainment and bringing movies back to that, authors, lecturers, you know, some of the humanities have, you know, a lot of programs that, you know, they do around the state. But one of the things we found with the architects that we have worked with is, according to them, and he said, you know, don't hold him to this in terms of, you know, in a court of law, but they work all over the world. And they said, you know, to us that they have not seen, like in our theater, these two distinct architectural styles, one from 1927, which is still visible and there, thankfully, nothing happened to that, and the one that was added then in the 50s with all of that gold gilt, you know, and the swirl and the Hollywood on the inside. So that brings us to another architectural interest. You know, they were telling us, for instance, people who are interested in preservation and architecture will flock to that sort of thing, because you don't, it doesn't, they don't know that it exists anywhere else than the pieces, you know, in the projects they've worked on. So there's a lot of levels here, you know, that we can establish in terms, you know, of making that a reuse, thriving cultural center, you know, for so many things. Film workshops, you know, all kinds of, you know, art exhibits. We're going to expand the lobby, so there'll be more room for artistic, you know, exhibits and those kinds of, you know, exhibits as well. So there's a lot of development for those kinds of things that, you know, Commissioner Bartman was talking about, in terms of the programming that can go forward.
So I know you've done a lot of work through volunteers and grants and some local fundraising to stabilize the roof, at least to secure it, so it's at the first step, I guess, of being secured.
First step, but not.
Stabilized.
Absolutely, needs to be stabilized. And we're concerned about, well, we're concerned about losing any of those buildings in the historic quarter, because that is the essence of our destination, you know, as a destination, a tourism community. But the other thing is the neighbors to all of those buildings, you know, and McMurray and Livingston, for instance, has had issues, of course, with that building that's next to them. The church just went through a massive renovation a year or two ago, you know, a million dollar renovation there. So they want, we want to make sure that that building doesn't involve, you know, some liability with the integrity of that building, or the one on the other side, because all of those buildings are joined. And the other thing, like Commissioner McElroy mentioned, we also, you know, when I was on the Main Street Board, and we still have folks, of course, here tonight from the board, we want to continue to bring all of that activity and traffic and families all the way down, further down that corridor, from where we have a lot of activity on, you know, 1 through 5. If we can continue to bring that down, then we continue to expand all of that economic vitality down through those, you know, blocks as well. Because obviously, if we have, you know, a thriving cultural center here, hopefully we might have a coffee bar, you know, or some restaurants, you know, that would obviously be indirect neighbors to that particular, you know, draw. So that's a positive, too. But it does, yeah, we need to stabilize the building, you know, we just don't want to lose that building. It's just too important to the community. Anything else?
Any questions? You have one?
Well, I just want to make sure the public understands, we're talking about how we're going to spend a 2% tax that is paid for by people who visit our town, and that we can't charge unless we have these type of projects.
That's right. It is a hotel tax.
The beauty of this proposal is that no citizen is going to have to bear this, any part of this burden, in terms of our Phase One, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I do think it would be worthwhile for me, one more time after tonight, before we move ahead with independent, you know, of each other making this decision, is to look at that debt schedule, and if we can get some guidance on getting a really solid, updated account statement of where we are exactly, you know, what are we paying for? I think we need to pull a report of some kind. Jim, do you mind helping us get that?
Not at all.
On some level? Okay, thank you very much. And then we'll share it with everyone, so at least we know the real numbers that are in front of us.
I think another thing we need to do is communicate with the Convention Center Board to make sure that there's no, we don't want to be spread so thin that something happens at the Convention Center that's a projected big expense coming in, and we don't have the money for that. And the permanent space that's needed with the pavilion we have is an issue, because that's nearing its end of its life. And then we've got the showroom lounge, and maybe that that could be a solution to that and maybe, so we just have to make sure we have our priorities of how to spend. Again, I totally support the project and hoping to find a way to do that, but we need to make sure we don't spread ourselves too thin on the conventions or the transient room tax funds.
Absolutely. The showroom is in the Tiff District that we talked about earlier, so that's good news. Yeah. And the Opportunity Zones. Anyone else have any thoughts, comments you want to make tonight, questions? Oh, Ms. Mary Hammond has one. Please.
No, it's not bad. It's all positive.
Just so you know, we have to stay on the topic of the Columbia.
Yes, yes. You know, as the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
It's legal.
Yes, Convention and Visitors Bureau, we're required with transient room tax to do a strategic plan. We have, you know, accreditation, all the things we have to do. I would like to see all of our stakeholders and partners that have in the transient room tax, come together and get our own plan. What are our priorities to see with that tax? What are the schedules? How, what, so that we have a vision that goes with the city and the county and downtown, the Tiff District, so that we are all thinking and no one's going, oh, yeah, let's do that, so that we're aware and just have our eye on the star and working together. And I look forward to that.
Thank you, Mary.
I support all this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comment? All right. Next on the agenda is an easy item, and then we're out of here. So we have, I think via email, I've been sending out to most everyone, a proposal to meet jointly like this on different topics through the next couple of months. So for March and April, there have been proposed dates sent, and I just wanted to make sure, while we're all in the same room together, that those would work for you all. They're Tuesday nights for March and April. They would start at 5:30, and those would be March 19th and April 16th are the proposed dates. And then at the April meeting, if we decide there are still further topics we would like to discuss together, we can put together future dates for those meetings as well. You are delaying till 5:30? 5:30 starts, so Commissioner Wilson can come after her board meeting.
Okay. March 19th, and what's the date in April?
April 16th. It's the third Tuesday at 5:30. Is that mostly okay with everyone? I think if we have one or two absences, we'll probably be okay, but, okay.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll put those on the books, and then as they get closer, we will put the agenda out as well. So there are a few topics of conversation kind of rolling around. If you have ideas or things you want to discuss together as a body, just send that to myself or the judge, and we'll put that on the agenda, okay?
And Madam Mayor, are we still planning on rotating venues, then?
I think we should consider that, if you guys are okay to have the next meeting.
Yeah, we'd love to.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Anyone else? I think we're finished.
I would like to say that I think we're going to go forward with these two bodies jointly and pulling behind the, pulling the same wagon, you know, for the good of the city and the county. And I think we're going to get a lot of good things done, and I think we're all on board with good motives and good intentions, and y'all've got an heart, and I've got to do little and try to help get things carried on, and I'm proud of our team and the commission. I know you are, yours, and we're going to push forward and do some good stuff.
All right. With that, I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn.
I move adjourned.